Yes. Call to order at 7:01. Uh, roll call please. Mr. Catalic?
Here.
Mrs. Ratzick?
Present.
Mr. Pan?
Present.
Mr. Neeson is absent with notice. Mrs. Lyons?
Here.
And myself, Dr. Van Palski present.
No.
Okay, public hearings tonight, we have non-approval of agenda. I'd like to add an item on new business. Number four. To set up public hearing for rezoning of properties on the southwest corner of Grashit and Lawson from residential office, single family through Lombardo. Everybody good with that? So move. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Okay, any public comments on our agenda items tonight? Approval of minutes for December 4th, 2018. Everybody good to look at those?
Motion to approve.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Communications, correspondence, workshop. Just to note, the MML procedural class for elected appointed officials is this Saturday at 9:00 a.m. at the village council offices. For anyone who would love to attend.
Is it a just show up or do we have to R's repeat?
Um, I believe it's just a show. Okay. Uh, moving on, anybody else have any communications or correspondence they'd like to share?
None.
Um, that is for consideration. Under old business, zoning documents prepare for recommendation to council with discussion and action. And we'll take that to Jeff.
Uh, you guys should have a memo in front of you, date of January 2nd, which I put together just to basically a summary of what we did over the last year in terms of making changes to the zoning ordinance. And I tried to put the status here of each of those items. I won't go through it in detail, but we did do the general administrative changes. Uh, we held a public hearing here on June 5th related to those. And we approved those, uh, we made a recommendation for village council to approve. Those were administrative changes, the building administrator and everybody in the site plan review. We took a look at the heavy light industrial office districts and we have a set of proposed changes to the schedule of district regulations related to the height setback minimum, a number of different changes there that we felt would make the existing properties that we have easier to develop and bring through the process by, in some cases, decreasing the front yard, front yard, uh, the lot widths. And also, um, just trying to remember, we're looking at decreasing minimum frontage in the high industrial district to 150 feet and reducing the minimum lot area on a couple of those as well. Where that is right now is, we reviewed it, but I believe that's still pending planning commission approval and making a recommendation village council. Before you tonight, you guys have the latest and greatest final draft, I believe, of the planned unit development overlay district. Uh, this was fairly complete last time, uh, we looked at it back in December. What I'll note, um, what the changes are in the back portion of this, uh, if you go to the basically second to last page of page five, section 51573, um, there's a section on PUD amendments, um, how amendments can be handled with the PUD process. We're recommending here that there are some administrative changes that can be made. We're just tweaking the plan, but if there are major changes in terms of phasing, um, types of elevation in structures that are being proposed to be rebuilt, major modifications can come back through planning commission and with a whole site plan and a whole site plan review. The other thing that was looked at, um, if you look at this, if you look at section 51572, this is the other big highlight, um, most of the language that's in this section under PUD application review came directly from the existing ordinance without changes. What has changed is the requirements in section E. What we are saying is that if someone is going to enter a PUD agreement with the village, they will not only provide a site plan, um, that's approved here, but they will put together a development agreement. And that development agreement must have these eight elements in it. And I think if you take a look at those, I think they cover most of the things that we had talked about and concerns. Man, manner of the ownership of the land, um, looking at how the ownership of the land is being dedicated to protect open areas, provision ensuring that open areas and other things that have been committed to such as recreation facilities and that, um, have the proper conveyances and other documents to create those, that there's a provision for financing to see that they are actually built during the process, um, and a couple other things that were related to natural features and that. So if you guys want to take a look at this, I would make the recommendation that we consider this next month potentially for approval, approving the heavy light industrial office district changes that we had made. And then finally, um, we would want to then, um, what we want to do is we would want to basically schedule a public hearing for all of us and then put a recommendation forward to the village council. As far as the signs go, we did make significant progress on the sign ordinance during the course of the last year where we kind of got stymied and come up at the end with the Supreme Court thing. Right now, where we have it, um, the, the village attorney's taking a look at it, they've made comments, I have their comments. We forward them on the court council at the county, the county's taking a look at it right now. What we're waiting for, wait for a recommendation from them, that they're going to actually have their staff assist in putting together a model ordinance for it, we're going to engage the services of the law firm or someone like that. So what we would like to do, as I mentioned before, we'd like to put together a model ordinance that could be used by all the communities in the county. We have 27 communities and everyone's kind of faced with so many same sign issues. That being said, um, I would suggest just keeping the signs on the back burner, but if you want to take these other ones forward, it would be appropriate at this time, I think, to move them forward to village council to get those approvals, because I think any other changes that we'll be looking to do or recommend to the zoning ordinance at this point will probably be at the end or come out as part of the end of the master planning process, which we can talk about. So we are at that point in time in the life of that document where we need to do an update, because that's supposed to be done every five years. Part of that is a zoning plan. So if there are more wholesale changes that we want to make or reassignments to districts or redefinition of districts, we can definitely do a deeper dive as we look into, um, the characteristics of those areas. And then we also explore talking to the community and talking to, um, the departments within the village, um, getting, getting basically a viewpoint of what people would like to see in those areas. So if we want to relook at the downtown area, relook at revisioning what Grashit looks like, we have an opportunity for that. And if changes to the zoning are the tools to make that happen, that's the other place, the time to make those. I don't think there's a lot of things to leave in the ordinance beyond what we've done. I think our, our single family, multifamily, all those housing categories, including, um, they, they, they're, they're serving us well, we haven't had any problems, really any issues with them. We kind of took out the ones that were, we were seeing the most calls for action by the ZVA and variance is being given, that being mostly the industrial ones. So, so with that, um, you have the update in front of you, I tried to encapsulate all the changes that we did, because even in my mind, I had to go back and think of what did we do in each of these districts and review all the notes and all the drafts that we did. But I could have a packet put together next month that would be cumulative of all of the changes. And if there's any further questions or discussion, we could do that.
Um, just that, um, what we had discussed prior, the PUD, um, the addition, when they want to come in and change it?
I believe you'll find that, that's, that's in the language that's, that's in there. It's, it's, it's in the amendment language.
Okay. And then is this the same one that was online?
This is the same.
Um, there were just a couple of things that I felt like house can always, there's a lot of, uh, just the term city versus village.
Okay.
Rob?
So we're looking to, to make some motions and decisions at the next meeting, right?
At the next meeting, yes.
If at all possible, can you give us two weeks before the meeting to?
Absolutely. I don't, I don't believe anything will change, but what I will do is in the next week, I will put together, I will get together the, the final drafts of each of those documents, format it so that you guys can have them to read through completely in their final form.
I just wanted to a little bit understand the draft.
Yeah, I don't want, I wouldn't want to dump that in the night before on you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else, any questions? Okay, uh, PUD overlay district ordinance, pretty much covered.
Yeah, pretty, I think we pretty much covered it. Like I said, um, take a look at those last sections, those, those were added since we last spoke to address the concerns that came out of the last meeting.
Thank you.
And I think if, if there are, I guess if there is any feedback or any changes you guys would like to see, we could do that, forward those to me and I will try to put them together quicker so we can get those and still get a vote out in front of everybody.
Cool.
Okay, new business, site plan review for 57070 Grashit, proposed store formerly Coyotes to Mr. Haytham and Talia, Talia? Okay. Do you want to start with this, Jeff, or do we want to have Mr. Talia?
Uh, well, just so you guys, I think, I think you guys know, we, we have a site plan in front of us that has been looked at by both myself and the engineer. My comments I provided to you, um, many of the items in the, um, site plan are in compliance with the zoning ordinance, there are a couple items that are not. The items that are, the two items that are not, they turn, well, two of the items that are not that this body has control over are the landscaping requirements. The landscaping requirements on the site require that there be a, that there be a berm or that there be some type of buffer zone between the, between Grashit and 26 Mile Road. Those are provided for and they're landscaped accordingly. Limitations of the site size, uh, for every, there's, there's supposed to be a, a set of site, I don't have the exact square feet here, um, of landscaping within the parking lot and then generally throughout the lot. There's no way, there's no way to build this and have space for those elements. With that being said, this body, there is a stipulation within the landscape requirements of the zoning ordinance that a planning commission may waive those requirements if those requirements seem that they would be excessive above and beyond what could be actually done with the property. So you have that for your consideration. The, the two driveways on the site that are, that are the entrance and the egress, um, the zoning ordinance requires that for those driveways, there should be a 25-foot separation from the neighboring lines. That does not exist in this case, um, but due to the configuration of where they are, their history, and the fact that the Macomb County Road Commission is not going to allow them to be moved any closer to the existing intersection, they're pretty much in the space that they are. That being said, uh, my recommendation would be that it'd be great to be able to ignore that, but unfortunately that requires appearance. And for that, that would require ZVA action. That would need to take place, uh, this as well. And lastly, just want to look at my notes here. What we did not, the other thing that we did not receive as part of the site plan was a, any elevations for the building. Within the general business district, the planning commission has approval of the building facade materials, um, and it's a requirement, required element of the site review process. That portion of the site plan is incomplete, but I don't believe that would necessarily be a showstopper for giving preliminary approval, as long as that those will be provided by the next meeting and the planning commission could take a look at those. But that's again, that, that is, that is, that is up to how this body wants to proceed. So again, the planning commission with this can waive the interior parking lot and landscaping requirements. The applicant would need to receive driveway variance from the zoning board of appeals. The applicant would need to provide the planning commission with building elevations containing the building facade material specifications, which the planning commission will be able to review and approve at a future meeting. The applicant will still need to provide the village engineer with a required stormwater detention solution. That is not something that we necessarily review as the zoning board, but the site plan does not have one and one of the limitations of the site is the size. But because if there is a compartment, there is, there is a, there is a statutory requirement for drainage. Um, I believe the applicant in this case, because of the cost of having that solution engineered, is looking to see if we get site plan approval and then would have that drawn up and that would become part of the engineering approval process that the engineer would take care of. And then lastly, um, we would still be, uh, before final site plan approval, everything's a review and comment by the village fire department, DPW, these things, I don't believe they'll have any, any, any concerns. So what my recommendation is, and you can also speak to the petitioner regarding your questions, my recommendation would be, um, to do a preliminary approval of this with conditions that would be do a preliminary approval, waiving the landscape requirements with the conditions that the facade was provided and would be signed off by us and that the site would meet all the engineering requirements, um, from the building department engineer.
You mean signed off by us at the next meeting?
Right. Or you, or, or you, there's, there's two ways we can do it. You can, you can grant preliminary site plan approval with final site plan approval when all those items come in, or you could just say, we want to wait till everything's in and then we'll get a final approval. It's your guys' call on that.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
You get maybe you, maybe for the petitioner, how about, there's no sidewalk, correct?
No, I believe there is.
That's why I wanted to make sure before I.
Because this, come on. I don't think there's any current, I don't think there's currently a sidewalk that's there.
No, but if we're going through with new development, we need sidewalks. In fact, that, because of where this is located in our Grashit and because of the, the future of 26 Mile Road will be a heavy, high traffic area, it'd be nice to adopt a wider asphalt trail type walkway so that there's biking and.
Ruining them.
Those things to go on in that corner, because obviously this is the start of what will be a larger.
And that's a four-way lane there too, I believe. You know, I would agree.
I want something safe to, as this project, you know, this is just the beginning, but, it's just a small piece of it, but it's going to set the pace for the rest of the project that'll, that'll be that track and some of that. And just to, from my opinion, I'd rather have things buttoned up and done before giving approval. Just my own past experience has bitten me in the butt with that. And I'd rather approve the whole project.
I have a couple more things, Jeff. How about, now I know you said the setback of 25 feet can't be maintained from this house.
It's 20, it's 25 feet, it's the setback of the, of the entrance to the, the approach apron from the property line.
So, uh, based on that, what about this, if we move forward, is this resident going to come, you know, is this, I guess we'll have a public hearing, how's that going to work?
No public hearing and a site plan approval.
I'm just saying, because we're gonna, there's going to be a variance given for that, right?
A variance would need to be granted to.
At ZVA?
For, for that ZVA to, to, to validate the site plan, because it's in the ordinance.
And is this person notified of that?
They would, they'll be notified.
So they have opportunity?
Absolutely, yeah. The ZVA, they will, everyone within 300 feet of the property would be notified for the ZVA meeting.
And then my last question is the signage?
No sign plan was submitted with, with this. Signage, it would be submitted to the building department at that time and if it's complying with the, with the sign ordinance elements, it would be administrated, it would be approved by the building administrator, unless he feels that he wants to kick it, but he has the right to kick it back to us for our approval. But we did, it is an administrative.
Well, the only reason I'm asking is because we've changed our ordinance, but not officially yet.
Correct.
So I think it would be appropriate if we ask for compliance for the new ordinance, or at least ask.
I'm thinking of, I'm thinking of the changes, not the changes that we have made in terms of a wall sign or, or a monument sign, I'd have to see what's, what would be potentially proposed.
Well, currently there's a pole sign, the old coyote sign, uh, which is out of our, what we're, what we're looking to do with signage.
Correct. We're looking, we're looking to remove the high line signs and go just to monument signs. We would, I think we would want to request from the petitioner that a monument sign would be considered for the site, unless he's just looking to do a wall sign on the building, which is perfectly fine too. I believe that the pole sign, I'm not exactly sure if it's in the right or way or not, but it would probably, most likely would be part of the demo of the building.
It's in the setback area, because the house is right against the setbacks. Or this building is.
The existing building is right up against, you know, is right up against the right of way.
Well, we're, we're going to bring the petitioner, I have several questions.
Absolutely.
I'd like to ask.
I have a, I have a housekeeping, that's why I threw mine out before.
I have a general question before this, um, it has to be approval here before it goes to ZVA, correct? Or can you send it to ZVA first?
The request for the variance at ZVA can be made.
At any, could it be, could that be started now?
It can be parallel, you can.
Parallel, okay.
Absolutely. I think we would just make our final, our final, your final decision would be contingent upon. What happens at ZVA.
Okay, so Mr. Talia, am I saying that correctly? I'm sorry.
Thank you for bringing something shiny into our domain. Thank you. Um, I'll let you start and then you can share what you like.
And hey, Talia, uh, thank you for, you have such a chance to be here today. Few questions, uh, to answer a few questions that you mentioned. The site plan, we're trying to get approved because as gentlemen, we want to find few site plans with floor, what's called floor plans and elevation, which is, I have some copies here, if you want to look at it. I think. All right, I gave copies to each one of you guys, I think, last time. So the top line and elevation, we have, we have all set. Only going to be two changes because last, the last email to Jeff, to Sir Jeff, we changed the layout for the building again. So every time we have set plan and elevation floor plans, we get to change something else from Jeff and settlement engineering. We got a question about the, the approach toward 26 Mile Road, in case the neighbors say anything, that's you and the house.
The house?
Yeah. What I'm trying to do, I have thought Jeff, last three years, I've worked on this value. The building, we own the building, I can keep it like this, get a business, we're going to have this building or we have something smaller, maybe like half the size we're going to have now, but I bet you're going to be a lot nicer, better for traffic, more modern building than what you have now. So the chance, if we do it now, we'll give you help for something nicer, even if we spend so much money, but I think it'd be nicer, it would be a work for all of us. All the track, 26 and, and Grashit, going to see something nice instead of this building here. So I'm trying to do everything we tend to do, just get something nice, even until the building to 2500 square feet, just to accommodate what you guys want. As I said, the house on the 26 Mile Road, I should have no problem because we own the house. And we have a problem with the approach on the, towards Grashit, because not less than in fact, that same thing we want the property on the Grashit next to the Coyotes, that should have no problem. In the future, if we need to put something there, we can go a few feet away from the property to accommodate what you want. The second one, when I spoke to the road commission people, they said there's no sidewalk and there's no reason to have, I to have sidewalk. That's why didn't, who, plant to put no sidewalk for the sidewalk. I'm not sure if you have any more question for me, I can answer Mr.
The sign.
The sign, I think that's all that can be taken care of after, upon approval.
They want to know that if you would, if you put the new signage, that you'll apply, comply with the new ordinance or the old one, meaning the pole sign would come down?
I don't need a pole sign, no. This is the building, right?
Either way. Just on the building, or it has to be a monument sign if it's on by the road?
No problem.
You're planning to put it on the building right now? Is that plan, just put the sign on the building right now?
I mean, not this building, the new building.
Yes.
That's okay, I'm okay with that, just around the building, it's good to go.
So do you think a sidewalk could be, I mean, is there, is it, is it possible to put a sidewalk there? I know, I understand why you don't have one now, ground in, and that's fine, but is, is that possible?
I, I would say along Grashit, uh, there's, there's coming along, uh, even for, I mean, put it inside the, just inside the future right of way, except that then there's a, you know, problem with the length, we can, or we could, we still have room to put it inside the existing right of way. 26 Mile Road, um, if we put it inside the existing right of way, it's going to be right along the curve of 26 Mile Road. I mean, we could set it back, you know, for something in the future, because there's, you know, as you know, 26 Mile, there's all sorts of houses and everything.
Right.
But I mean, if you wanted to get it started, I mean, we could put it inside that, um, there's like a water baby's lip, uh, that you can see just in front of the landscaping, proposed landscaping. I mean, if there would be, you know, you could fit like a, whatever you think, if you wanted like an eight book bike path type, that should fit in there.
And it would be beneficial for you as well, because people could get to your.
I have no problem, it's possible to do it, I don't mind doing it, yes. If I have the room to do it, yes.
Um, did you consider, because we're, because you're dealing with such an irregular.
Yes.
Lot, really, based on what the future holds and what you can currently build, is there any consideration of not taking up, if you own that house next door, use up that property as part of this project to, um, better fit everything that you need to fit on here? Because I looked at, I, I look at the loading area here and I, I just don't feel that that's inadequate place to stick a tractor, trailer, beer truck, pop truck, um, you know, the type of trucks that you get for delivery into that space. And then I'm also looking at the space that, for the container, the trash container, you almost need to turn that 45 degrees to the, to the left so that they can come straight in in there and actually get their, the can up and out versus trying to, are you following me, sir? Trying to turn it into that space, get the can back up, um, you know, what I, what I see with the angles here is that the, the can is just going to always be outside the, the actual receptacle to hold the can, you know what I mean?
I think it might only create one entry way to pick up the trash, it would be awful.
They usually just pull those trucks up though and lift them.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, the space that's between the building and that dumpster, it's not, if you turned it on a 45 degree angle, if you want to come close and maybe it'd be easier to understand what I'm saying if I write it out for you, but you turn, you turn it even with the driveway or the parking lot, you know what I mean?
Right. But I mean, it's not at a 45 to the, um, to the approach boy, north and south.
I don't think I'm explaining it well enough to you. So it's this way, so that when the truck comes in, they get a nice straight path to come in. Or you're trying to fit a parking space in between the dumpsters.
From here to here, oh, clearly, bye.
Trying to say something. They pull the door lock and trying to get straight down here. He's not gonna do that, he's gonna dump the dang.
Well, he's not gonna be able to, because we have, they're gonna make sure. So they give us a problem, we'll call it, we'll get us this.
I just don't, I just don't, I don't understand. I see what you're talking, you're at the max basis, right? You have a minimum, minimum basis.
Well, and those trucks will basically will come here and to them will just turn here.
And where are you gonna put the sidewalk?
Where my workers. We actually have the dumpster.
So, I mean, overall, it just seems like, is it possible to use this other lot that you own next to this? Does this stretch to this? Yeah. Well, I mean. We're trying to fit a lot in this space, and you've got this whole piece of property here, and you're getting squeezed out in the front here.
All I have is from here. This house, this is the house, if you take the house, you got nothing. So the house gonna, gonna hold it.
Well, no, but the lot goes back how far?
No, it's not, this is a lot.
You only own the house?
Yes.
You don't own the garage?
Yeah.
You own the lot that it's on, right?
I like, I'm just. Let me see, I'm sorry, yes. From, yeah, all the way here to the, yeah, yeah. So if they take it off, they're gonna give me a lot. And when I try to do, sort of, cut it off, there's so many electric power stuff here. When tried to work with them, it will be, like, excuse me, like a hell. Lot of the bathroom. And when I spoke to the, the electric stuff, it's for me, when you double that, we're gonna like hell, even the dead one. That's why it's a lot, I was working on this, like.
You say there's electrical running in front?
Oh, maybe DTE. AT&amp;T, everybody else, we don't know, but there, can I just remove them?
There's a lot there.
There are a lot there, you gotta call this company, I tried to, they're all like, hold on, six months, I can get nothing.
You're looking for you to pay for it?
We're gonna pay for it, supposed to pay for it, yeah, we're supposed to pay for it, but so, I can't get, who was there, who's not there. But we saw all, let's make sense, can't clean, there's no name, nothing's missing, a pole's supposed to be named, or, or called something, okay, come by nothing. So we put it, for, you know, you throw this.
Is that, whose responsibility this should be, Jeff, as far as DTE and the electricals and should that really be their responsibility if there needs to be moved?
Even of them, since they're, they're basically not.
Yes, and I, I connected him with the folks at DTE in terms of, DT in terms of identifying who's on the pole, who all needs to be moved, but yeah, it generally becomes the owner to ask to, to encumber the cost.
Even though what, what they had placed there is limiting what he can do on that lot, because it's so small, with them having the utilities in the little lot.
I don't know the history, I don't know what the history is there, what was there next to the building, or the building was there, you know?
I mean, I see where, he's, his issue is because his setbacks are all getting pushed back from what's currently set at that building. It squeezes this lot to be such a tiny spot now.
Correct.
And it really needs to be enlarged, to fit everything on there, at least properly, without variances and because you know the future is gonna, is coming. That the road is gonna be done, and.
It, I can't say it's one to can or can't, it's gonna happen.
It seems like it's, the growth has been, they've been widening out 26 mile in various areas, and with the amount of homes between us and 94, you know.
I, I don't doubt you'll see a widening, but I don't think you're gonna see a widening to what they were thinking of a four lane boulevard like it is out at Metro Beach, or I'm sorry, out of Stony Creek. When you get to that end of 26, that right of way was set aside to build that. So that's a lot of right of way.
You're talking in front of Myers and.
Yeah, I think what you're gonna, I think what you may see, and I can't speak for the road commission, but I think in the future, I think you're gonna see a new thoroughfare plan that comes out from them that's gonna reduce those. Because I know there's, there's discussion about that taking place right now. Because persons like, there are people all along that corridor and other communities that are saying the same thing, you know, you're, there's a right of way here, there's a tape, you know, you're setting this aside. But the communities, when they, when the thoroughfare plan was made, the communities agreed with the road commission that they would write those and respect those right of ways in their master plans. That's what we're, that's what we're doing in this case, so.
But I think those hanging in the wind.
Will, will, will eventually do widen, yes, but to the degree that they set the width aside, the right of way, I doubt very much.
The new building, as Jeff changed from the last side plan he had, we went back, that's why it's a small building, all the way to where the road commission acquired.
Yeah, it's not from your previous.
So all the way, so if there's expanding in the future, the road commission have problem. That's why it's a small building, but it's okay, it's okay with you guys, you can work with this.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Do, do we have, do we have facade materials?
We, no, that was the original plan.
Okay.
So you didn't get, you know, when you were cutting, we just sent you the picture. So the facades, they were, did you update the package? So if the materials, I mean, the same, the whole thing was approved for plan.
Did you go to your fellows?
Yeah.
Okay, that one I did not see.
This was from last month. The same thing, all of it had changed, look, shape, that's the shipment, that whole thing.
Yeah, we didn't give that.
I don't believe there were any modifications on this one. Jeff was, this was the last one, that was submitted to the, to Lori.
So you're currently.
No, we haven't seen those, so that's it, why don't we just sit around for a second?
I didn't copy, still no copy.
That's okay, you can get that, you don't have to. So there's a Mason.
Everything's gonna be different in the shape of the new building, gonna be a little bit denser, it'll be same, everything elevation, interior, it'll be same.
Okay, and this.
No, in fact, this is horrendously, I think.
Let's move it all over first.
It looks like a prison.
Can you show us where's the entrance, so this front is where?
Okay, this is because supposed to be like, all straight from here to here.
Okay, so this is gonna get straight?
I'm sorry, the old building, supposed to like from here, straight, straight, straight. So all, no angles like this one. So I didn't, we didn't design this one yet, but the old one, the old one, this is towards garage.
So this is facing this way?
This one, no.
No, this is facing here.
This is gonna be here, okay.
The windows are where these ramps are.
Yes.
You're saying you're gonna arrange it as to a square spot?
No, no, it was, it was like this.
Oh, yeah, well, don't tell me what was, what's on here is what is.
We're gonna, we're gonna put the entrance from here, we think.
Ah, at an angle.
At an angle. That's, I think that's what I think, the best way. We're gonna put everything else here, the counter, everything else, and the entrance from here.
Okay.
Because I think we can, we have a parking lot, we're gonna fix in the parking lot, that's what we think, the best way to do it.
This is just the inside.
The inside.
So these are the sides of the building, huh? So these windows are just up high like this?
Yes.
And those are black, so we can't see in there, right?
No. I think it'll be good for the inside, sunshine, right?
And so this is your entrance, and then this door here, is that by your lower?
Back door, yes, by the back door, it's quite a back door.
So what is going to be right here visually?
We don't feel like this, we have a title back, or eyesore, and then colors here, showing.
Okay.
These windows facing.
And then visually, here is going to be this.
Like along here, she wants to know what this looks like when you're standing up here.
Right here, that. So the entrance is on the back side.
Entrance from here. That's what I think, if you get an idea, I can change, that's the best way to do it, because the parking lot is here. So because they park, they see the entrance, with the sign, with the, this one, like something shows. I think it's nice building, all the green and like this color.
And this is brick, correct?
Brick, yes, man.
Cinder.
Not in the black, it's a, what's called.
Split face.
Split face, yes.
Is this an awning?
Awning.
Like a metal awning?
I think so, yeah, some kind of awning.
Oh, and here's where your sign is gonna be?
Yes.
Okay.
And this, is this gonna extend so that it's high, because I'm guessing, I mean, no mechanicals down here, so all the mechanicals gotta go on this roof, right?
Yes.
So we're gonna look at all the mechanicals sitting here too, because there's no.
When you talk, so this would be here.
Yeah, all we're gonna have, I mean, it's maybe a place or on the AC unit or something like that, that's a couple of them gonna be up there.
So we like new, but we want really great. So I'm wondering, is there something that can be modified that could hide all those mechanicals? And then maybe, is there a limit to the height?
How high is this?
It's 14, one and a half.
Oh, it's 14. So that, I'm saying, what was that, three, four? I'm just curious about how.
It's 12, yeah.
I thought it was 12. So Jeff is telling me that you have a one and a half story limit here, I'm wondering, is there something that could be extended with this, you know, what you had here that could wrap the building? And then we wouldn't see all the mechanicals, and then maybe that makes bigger space for your sign. And maybe that might start, that's a start, does that, is everybody?
I gotta say, this is just.
I'm, I'm gonna say honestly.
Into the village of New Haven?
My concern is, is. We, we need to help them understand what we would like to see.
Okay, I'm just saying, what's, what's nice? Go look at the.
My concern is.
Go look at Rite Aid at the corner of 27 and Garage.
I like, I'm sorry, nice and simple, all they have 25 square, 2500 square feet, I can't put so much top on it.
I agree, I understand, but it doesn't make sense for us to say, we don't like this, go find something else?
Yeah.
It's probably best if we maybe give them some direction.
Yeah.
We're gonna just make our opinions, right?
One more thing, I have like, we have 35 feet wide roofing, right?
Okay.
This is a flat roof, so when you put some stuff, stuff there, how do you can see it? That's why we don't put like four page or eight page roof, because you can see the stuff, that's why they make plateau, to put the stuff there, that's the commercial I heard.
So would we see the stuff?
No, but I would request that.
I mean, we can see it, but I can put up, I can find something that wants it.
I, I'm wondering if maybe this could just get extended and wrap the building, so there'd be that step behind that one, and we won't see those things, so that, that's a good start.
That's no problem.
I'm gonna make, you know, I'm talking to Jeff here, you know, especially the outwardly facing the garage and the 26 mile, is there a possibility of opening that up with windows?
More windows?
More windows, yeah, like broader windows, I mean.
Can I say something?
Sure, absolutely.
I'm sorry, okay. I have a little stone corner, so maybe a little service, I think like at least 50, 50 feet corner, gonna be from here, to here, half of this one. This is gonna be mostly coolers, locking coolers.
That's what I'm thinking about, like, would that help you on the inside?
That's why I put the windows down, it's gonna help, because as above, they're gonna help me here, it can't help me here.
Right, I understand what you're saying.
So I like windows, I like everything, but.
But the interior, with the interior used that way.
Yeah, that's not, you're just gonna put stuff like the windows, so you're not gonna see them anyways, right, is that basically what you're saying?
The ordinance doesn't allow for that anyway, so this is here.
It's gonna be here, yeah. That is. Gonna be here, yes, here.
Yeah, no, I'm saying, I was pointing to this, this back wall. I'm sorry, no, this, this front is here, yeah, this is, that's the loading.
Request.
Yeah, gonna be this.
Yes.
And this, is this part right here? So this door is gonna be actually out here on the curb, it's not gonna be out here.
So the opposite of this is this. Yeah, but then, do you want clear windows, Jeff, were you thinking clear windows? I understand his predicament, because, I mean, spatially inside, you can't, I mean, we can say we have to put windows, but then where's he gonna put his coolers? Well, his coolers are gonna go over the, is that what you were saying?
Do you need more windows than this, like you told me?
Or real windows, not glass block?
I don't think they're just like glass, I mean, I said windows, but the coolers, they are something shiny, you can get a flash out of them. Well, these look like glass block windows to me.
Yeah, I mean, that would be, if you just took the.
No, I think the.
Can you, what, can you switch this?
Switch with what?
So this is garage, right?
This is garage, yes.
Agree, okay, can you put your coolers over here and your counter over here?
Uh, hold on, let me see, this is entrance, this is garage, this is garage.
Oh, this isn't entrance?
This is, uh, this is garage.
Now, this is not.
26, right?
The entrance is in the back.
This is the door.
This is garage.
And you have to remember, this was.
This is, yeah, this is not, this has nothing to do with what we're looking at now.
It was just more for us.
This building is totally differently out now than what we're.
Yeah.
This is updated, this is not updated. So it's kinda hard to look.
No, but it's the same.
It's the same, yeah, they were all the same.
Yeah, so if this is the entrance, that is garage over there, so his coolers are along garage. If he would, is willing to block these two, then that allows for windows here, which we have windows behind you on your counter. But then my question is, were you anticipating a clear window?
I think we're looking for a window that would be scaled, that would be scaled, that would make, that would, that would make it look like a balanced building, not just a concrete brick wall.
Right.
No, no, we have window.
Yeah, because even, even the ones high up, they aren't gonna give you that effect, it's just gonna, it's gonna look more like an industrial, that's my opinion.
So if these windows came down.
If they were one full windows.
Right, I agree.
Half the distance, or maybe the.
Right.
They may be down two.
And then maybe on the lower half, maybe some additional drinery. Right, and then his landscaping, so now my question is.
That's for safety issues too, I mean, people, police driving by or whatever can't be able to see inside, if there's something going wrong, you want that, safety.
Yeah, I don't actually, on the reason, on the, I was talking, I was putting this, I like windows, a lot. And I said, either side, if I put my coolers here, because my, like, pressure of like 10, 12 feet high. My cooler's like eight feet high, so this, and I'm saying, for either side, either side, either side, I can make a difference, because.
You give that height of, sorry.
Yeah, because I have stuff there. So I can, we can keep this one on like three windows, all the, the top. You can put maybe some windows in the empty spaces where I don't have no coolers and no, um, frontons.
But you're looking at shelving and everything along.
Yeah, that does, yeah.
So, so switching this isn't.
They're gonna change them, because both sides.
They're gonna block on both sides.
Yeah, I'm saying.
So, what if there are these windows here, but they were the block?
Glass block?
That's what they are now.
I know, but a full light, and if they were framed appropriately. I'm just throwing things out there.
Isn't it still gonna be blocked up on the inside?
Yes. They're stuck in the front of them.
Yeah, but if we could.
Technically, you can't put anything in front of windows anyways.
Right, if he would do the switch, then it doesn't matter what the height of his, of his shelving is, because it's glass block and you can't really see that anyway, it's just really a light. You know?
It's just really aesthetic for the outside.
For the outdoors, correct.
It's, it.
It could really even be a spandrel window, it doesn't even have to be a real one, that, that's an option. So that's like a fake window on the outs, you know? That's something that.
I think they are both below feet, because I think that's what the shelving.
Because otherwise, it's just be lowered. Doesn't even see, showing or you see the.
Right, but if they were full windows, they'd look better from the outside.
Something fronted, or you can see nothing.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. We can still make them clear windows, I need some sunshine.
Right.
The building I have, that's why, that is on leave, because.
Start.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I need some sunshine, some.
And you could do the black at the top and the spandrel at the bottom, so it looks, and it would look, you know, you make it make that look pretty.
So you're saying this would almost be like, like an old style, above the doors?
A transom.
A transom, that's what I'm looking for.
But this window underneath here, right, is really a non-functioning window, it's more, it's like a frosted, you know, so you don't see anything.
So it doesn't look like, this looks like a.
I mean, you even have the potential, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm sending money here, but awnings would help.
That, that's an option too, but, I mean, I think this is a priority to cover this, this mechanicals.
So your sign is gonna be on garage, correct?
I said garage, on the, on the whole.
On the building on garage.
Yeah, all up on the whole band. Yeah, then we make sign open, yeah, on the garage.
And you also have these sporadic bushes throughout the lawn. To meet the, the landscaping, maybe dress the sides of the building with landscape, versus tossing these bushes all up in the lawn.
That's okay, that's no problem, this.
You're talking like lighting the front?
Yeah.
Trying to break up the side, so it looks.
I have a pencil.
You don't need all these bushes on the lawn.
What I can do, this all, we have 26 fronted here, for that here, I can put the doors here, and rest windows, you can do that, to make all windows.
So.
So like this here, you would expand this.
Yes, all this front, 26. All this front, twenty six, this twenty six, twenty six feet. We, what are the doors, six to eight feet, six to eight feet, nine feet. I'm gonna put the rest from here to here window, to here window, and then the door, the door, and then the door. We can put all these windows.
All the way down? Is that what you're saying?
You're saying across?
Oh, all the way across, oh, yeah.
This would be like one gigantic window.
Yeah. I mean, depends on the architect, you gotta have some blocks, right, to hold it all, you know?
For sure, for sure.
Over the engineering, except we can put windows straight all the way.
And this is where the shrubs would be and stuff?
Right, that's right here, then you have your shrubbery, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
This is just pencils, so you can trace it, is that okay?
I have a pencil, no worries, just, just say, just say yes, no worries. But only two years.
Do you know what I'm saying? If they brought these down, and like I said, these would be black here, and then there's windows, and they're like a frosted window. So it looks, you can't see it.
Right, yeah.
You know what I mean? But if they put a nice limestone sill or some other.
I like the awning aspect because it adds depth.
Yeah, so this comes down.
That sill adds depth.
Yeah.
Either way.
Cause we like pretty, remember that? And then if this could get extended to hide that, hide your mechanicals. And then these awnings again, Jeff, you like that?
No, I was thinking all day. All of the salt.
Two, three feet all around the building, that's fine with me.
I'm not, I'm talking about placing like an awning here, here.
Oh, oh, in front of the window. I thought you were talking about the.
Yeah, maybe they could use this.
Just individual little, like one, not even, you know. But we're, but this, yeah.
See how this is above this window? This is a little awning. So do, do, if you could do, um, you know, one across these. On the face of the building, on the, on the front. And then this is gonna get taller here because you're gonna have your air conditioner and.
It's gonna be, no, it's gonna be like a wall, you said.
A wall, whatever.
Right, like two, three feet, that was, that's what you're talking about.
Enough to cover the.
What do you have?
And it needs to be over here too. But this is facing twenty six mile.
This, so another awning here. No, or you want to have full windows? Let, let him have his, let him have his light come in through here and put the awnings down. So over the windows, I have twenty six.
Jeff, he's got an awning.
That's going all the way around. He's got an awning over there, so yeah.
But those are covering the.
Everything except the Grashit.
The windows.
Yeah, above, above the.
Yeah. So what she's saying is if you drag these down with the fake and you put something decorative here. But you might not have to put anything decorative because not even a lawn.
Yeah, not even. There's a big, yeah, difference. And then again, you know, you add your shrubbery.
But this awning isn't on the other side.
Well, you can't. Only the Grashit, only the, only the Grashit, and then awning, that's all you wanted.
Okay.
Awning, look, are you telling me, this is like, I'm sorry, I don't have the answer for this one. You're pushing on this? You're pushing.
Well, you're raising the height for me.
This is it.
You're raising the height for this from eight inches.
This is it, that's what you're talking about.
Yeah.
You're making this like two feet.
Yeah, for sure.
A couple of stuff.
So everything you put up there is not seen by everybody in your eyes, by them.
We dropped, you know, dropped this, these shrubs.
That's actually a crazy job.
What?
Just recording.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I'm pretty little headed. But see what I'm saying, what a difference? I'm such a great shrub drawer, I know.
Yeah, we'll go with that.
You know?
So, I mean, outside, right?
This is, yeah, this is what it looks like at Grashit. And you don't have to do the black down here. I would do, do you know what I'm talking about, the fake windows? Do you know what I'm talking about, sir? So you'd be able to hook them up with the appropriate, okay? So it looks like a regular window, but it's like frosted. And you can't see in it.
Okay.
It would just look.
They also brick the building instead of that, that split face brick that's so industrial. The only place that we've allowed it in the current is on the back of a building that no one sees, a split face brick. Buildings have been built, you know, in the current times, we put the brick on buildings. And since this building is basically, you know, three sixty years all the way around, it really should come out with brick, what color?
That's a good, this, this, that's a good, so the black.
This is a black?
Nobody believes that.
It's a black? No.
That's something, when we look at, when we look at the district, we can do that.
Good idea.
But I do, do you like dark green?
Green, yeah, kind of green, uh.
Like a dark.
Light green, yeah. Like the sky, not all the guy, like.
Yeah, that's like teal.
Yeah.
But I'm saying here, these same things I'm suggesting here, because this space is twenty six.
So this here.
This space is twenty six.
This is the back of the building, just here.
This space is Grashit.
Okay, here it is.
So what people are gonna drive by and see, they're gonna see this on twenty six.
Yeah, it should look the same.
Yes, it should look the same, yeah.
What do you call them, frosted windows?
It, yeah, it's frosted, or sp- spandrel, S P A N, spandrel.
Or full window.
S P A N G R E L.
Put a glass window on there and spray it.
Yep, G R E L.
With the same.
Yeah.
And what else are, is like sometimes you'll see a big building and you'll see tons of windows, but maybe after market.
And then the awnings again, you could actually even, because you have that one awning there.
You can put this, cause the loading zone is in front of this.
Yeah.
So you could put bushes out. See this space here, you could surround the loading zone with bushes.
Yeah, for sure.
Break up the view.
And that awning, this awning all the way across, you know? Like this one.
Yeah.
I mean, have an off-white brick will look cool. But if we have like a green, wherever, this was all green.
This awning should be safe here, right? You're talking about safe.
Yep, all the way across there.
I'm just thinking.
You're spending your money here.
That's fine, just, just. As I said, I didn't think it would be necessary that we have now.
Right.
Absolutely, I agree with you a hundred percent.
I saw yellow on.
I know, I know.
We're trying to think about the future, you know what I mean? I'm like, who the, drive in and go, oh my God, what is that? I'm disgusted by a.
Awning, all the, all the. Is that the twenty six mile?
No, I'm talking, I'm talking to you.
Oh, all this detail, angry.
Yeah, we wanna ride all the way across.
It's very symbolic of the, the, one little thought, was it? This color.
You're not, but this is the roof, looking.
Looks the same, this color, it looks like a, you know, like a greenish background. To have this color in here. I mean, it would look like the village colors, you know, cause you have an off-white brick.
It's got a dark color in it.
Little, well, not that dark, but, um.
Trying to find something.
Yeah, I don't have it. The only thing I, what I'm saying, yes.
Enough was this.
We're just trying to find a different color.
I'm just saying, we're someone. Let me take it back to the architect, tell him to jazz this thing up properly, so it looks pretty.
Hey, but who, who is, who's your designer?
It looks like Derek Alm, Lema Rand.
Okay. If, if you, if, if F, if we want to meet in the near future and just talk about some of these ideas with him, we're more than happy to sit down with him.
That's awesome, yeah.
That would be great, that would be, that would be some.
What is the name of the, you know? The post?
It's a, a business we have, twenty six mile, in New Haven, the, the crystal, that's all good.
So Andy's, it's gonna say.
Grashit liquor, Andy's, yeah.
Okay, you just changed, okay.
What was that?
Are you gonna make Andy's this big and liquor this big?
No, there's no Andy's, I changed the name. Grashit liquor, no more Andy's.
Grashit?
Yeah.
So now.
Now.
What are you gonna do with your other spot?
To work on that.
Yeah, listen.
Work on.
This main spot, I have to use my license, have to leave. If you guys help me, I think okay, you guys know this, the actual land, I'll leave it to you. What do you think is good to vote, we vote for you, for, for all of us. Was, between me and you, I, we still have the liquor license for, for the bar.
Ah.
Like to have it, I mean, maybe, not like, not a little bar, maybe you have something fancy restaurant slash bar.
Okay.
But I'll leave it open, when, hopefully friendly, me and Tom come see you for the next voting. But, or it's, or something good for, for all of us, you know? For the actual land.
Would you leave a party store where it's at and build a restaurant there?
A bar.
This is those restaurants.
You've got two tables.
It's twenty five hundred square feet, it's not big.
You would have to knock down the houses.
Yes, the house, as I said, it doesn't help a lot because all the zoning doesn't take much.
This does not seem.
The New Haven needs someplace to go and dance.
It doesn't open to that.
That's why I have to leave.
It doesn't open up that much more space.
Do you own the, 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 now?
No, as I said, I called the lady.
All in the middle of somebody's property is not.
It's a nice piece of property, and if you leave, like.
I mean, you should have their, their stuff put together in some kind of mini, right?
Well, I'm looking at twenty five, twenty six.
This is like what fiber for the school is on that pole.
Three years, if you can help me, I can get a lot of fiber, I'll leave it there.
So you, the liquor license, you're gonna close that.
Close, that's on close.
And then you're.
Okay, guys.
As D D, the.
Well, there's a package. He's talking.
So if you want to come back.
I have the liquor license for the store, and I have the liquor license for the.
Okay, but you're not, okay, we're not, we're not disturbing out of here. So you're keeping that license open?
This is, I'm gonna keep my liquor license over here, hopefully. And then when we vote it, if somebody wants first one slash bar, we have the liquor license for them to operate.
Yeah. How big is that area? Is it smaller than the?
That's big, uh, it's not much restriction.
Interesting.
That's us, I'll just want to get done with this, I can work, I already, he already has the door for everything. Almost you start working on it, but wanna get, always have something to this voting.
I think we kinda. We need a lot more progress. Hasn't been had the village to say to utility companies that you need to come clean up your mess.
I don't know.
The pole's been there for like a month. Talk about the one in front of McDonald's?
No.
No, no, not the, the, the two that are on his, on his parcel.
He's always every single thing up on that pole that he could possibly use for Village of New Haven.
Okay.
In the meantime, it's affecting the value of his land and the way he can use it.
Plus, I think even though the history of his current business, I mean, you go in there twice, you're no longer a stranger. You treat people very well.
Thank you.
And that means a lot of inches go far, because.
I have to say that too.
Thank you.
I'm kind of excited, I mean, it's been.
As I said, I have nicer.
Now we got.
The only there is five thousand. Me ask, like when you took over two thousand fifteen, I had like two chances to lease it. I backed up last month, you know why? Because I said, if I lease it now, I don't have a chance to change it. You know what I'm saying? Because I have a lease. So I backed up, but on, for something nicer, when the people drive, more than you're gonna have there, it'd be nicer than what you have now. I've been after Jeff for two years.
It, it will, I mean, yes, it, it will look nice, I mean.
I kinda like Mary Ann's store better than liquor, Grashit liquor.
Or even do something like this, like, no, even in the title, like, uh, something, you know?
Yeah, I have a, I have a, something.
New.
Well, we have tarnished market, I like the.
The liquor. The village staff.
Throw a liquor on the building, just. If we were to draw a line, block windows.
It's one thing to advertise it.
Okay. I appreciate you coming in though and taking.
Yeah, I. Now that we've seen the.
Yeah. Okay.
View, better view.
In fact, Mr. Camilla, so are you comfortable then meeting with Jeff, your build up, your designer?
Yes.
Yourself?
Yes.
And then, um, are you, you good coming back next month with where we?
When we done whatever, if you want, you mean, yeah. If we backed up, what was required, we'll be back, of course.
And then we'll put you on the agenda, same thing for, for next month, with the, with the changes.
Okay, well, we have two, three, five months, one month.
Is that enough time for you?
You have to bet your.
Oh, no, it's architect, how about the engineer, or stop.
No, 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 yeah.
Engineering, you've got time for. You can take care of the engineering later. We're just looking at just the site plan, so we would wanna see architectural drawings with changes on them, based upon the, the things we're talking about here tonight. And then I think the only other, the only other action that you may want to start would be to put the application into the Z B A variance for the driveways. Cause we can parallel those at the same time.
Okay.
Uh, cause if you were to put the application with Lori, this, if you get it in soon, this month, we can have that scheduled for Z B A, uh, in February. They'll meet again.
Um, so then, uh, you think, so this layout you don't think will change?
As far, as far as the site, as far as the site plan that you've submitted, I'm, I'm good with it. It, it, it met my requirements in terms of looking at the zoning and being compliant. Aside from, as I indicated, the, there is no, there, the fulfillment of landscaping for parking and the general um site landscaping is not fulfilled because of the site. But I think that if we were trying to agree, man, if those additional landscaping elements could be moved to the front on the facade of the building, then.
It might actually look more often by the back.
Well, if you look at bushes thrown out on the lawn, you get twenty seven in Grashit, the gas station with all the weeds growing through the bushes.
And you gotta think too, all the, all the crept, it's getting pushed from the road.
Yes.
All the damage in the snow, the rocks all piling up all the way along and your bushes destroying the landscaping. Against the building, a little safer.
And more space in the sidewalk too.
And a sidewalk.
Yeah, it helps with the sidewalk too.
Okay, so sidewalk and then the, sidewalk and.
Yes. Sidewalk is not required in general business, not in the ordinance that we have requirement for it.
Plus, I'm concerned about traffic coming in and out and where's that sidewalk going to be as far as the cars pulling in and off? Does anybody know off the top of their head what else is on that corner? Does McDonald's have a sidewalk? Is there even connectivity with that sidewalk?
There's sidewalks on twenty six up to the McDonald's. I believe there is sidewalk all the way to the corner.
Is there? Okay.
At McDonald's. And then there's a sig, then it is a signalized crossing there.
Yeah, okay.
But that was designed, it was already set back.
Now, when I ask the local commission guy, they said they don't have no sidewalk.
Yeah.
The. Mcooke County.
Mcooke County's not going to want to have sidewalks inside the right of way.
But if you're talking about them not actually using the area that they're talking about, then the sidewalks should be fine because I think it's important to put the sidewalks here because this is just a little itty bitty piece of an entire triangle and it's all going to come to a head at his property to cross track.
Okay, McDonald's, you can track this to like at the sidewalk.
Noting, noting that comment, as we look at the, as we look at the master plan, look at the general business district, we may want to put a provision in there for sidewalks and a potential, as you've said, a wider safety path, which goes starts at eight feet, um, as, as maybe a requirement for future development. It may be, I don't know that we have the ability to require it here because it's not part of the ordinance. Uh, but it's something that could be potentially worked into the site or as other development happens, maybe that's something the village should fill in.
I mean, there's other development happens around this and it's going to dead end at this corner property where, oh, can't go no farther.
But then if, if the landscaping is against the building and there is room for it.
It leaves no room for what you said.
You know, as this develops here. Is your raise in that?
And, and there's, there's, there's other ways of potentially taking care of that in the future. Um, in terms of, in terms of pedestrian safety and that, there's, there's tap grants, there's other things that you could, you could tap from that.
Jeff, don't give me a start on that. I've been fighting for fifteen years for sidewalks and uh school uh safety zones and none of this ever happened.
I know, I know, I know the safe routes to school. That's a, that's a long, arduous process.
Great job calling here.
Okay, so are you, are you good then coming back?
Most likely, yes.
Next month, sorry.
Most likely, we're going to see you for sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, I can, I can, I can go with the, I hopefully I can meet with one, two of you at different times. So.
Okay.
Want to know exactly what you want before I go to the.
Okay.
Again.
Yeah, if you may.
So what we can do is, um.
And you can do, you know.
Yeah, let's, let's meet, but if you want me to be your architect on board, if we want to do a Wednesday here, we could do it. You, we can do it for no charge and just have a meeting here. And if anybody wanted to come to that meeting.
Good idea.
Um, that would probably.
Yeah, just tell me exactly what you want, all the details.
Okay, let's do this. Anything you want, just group email. You know, aside from if you think of anything in the next, whatever.
Jeff, we'll have a checklist.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, just send it to me and then, then if there's other questions that come up, we can go from there.
Okay.
I think I'm, I think we're all fairly clear on what we're looking for.
Okay.
So I'll meet with you, Jeff?
You'll say?
Um, let me, I'll tell, let me, let me check.
I can, I can.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I can do, I'm not sure I can do this Wednesday, but let me just talk real quick here.
I can stop behind the place you want.
So I can come up here, I can meet you right here. We can meet right here.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
What sort of like timeframe do you think, everything, let's say everything moves along, everything, every step of the way gets handled and it's, everything is good to go, and when would you think completion would be or even start?
Also, I already have, uh, what do you call it? What do you call it? Fan tractor. Ready, ready to go for the mega.
Oh, so you want to break ground during the winter here?
I mean, to get the whole thing, yeah, you can work on it. Yeah.
Oh, um, something was mentioned in regards to um the history that's contained in the upstairs of that building. Is all those items still sitting up there? You know, it's kind of a historic spot to the village.
Nothing there, there's damage.
It's all gone.
Piece of wood, plywood, some, all damaged, nothing there.
So if there's anything that we, you know, maybe you could contact the uh New Haven Historical Society, if there's anything they wanted to pull up before you bulldoze the two uses.
I give all stuff away. I give most of it to cops.
Okay.
And if they call you or not, I told them, if they have something to grab from there, they can have chairs, tables, everything.
Well, no, they would be looking for more architectural items that were part of the original building there.
There's nothing there, no.
Okay, and then don't forget CBA, set that up.
CBA, okay.
I am available Wednesday afternoon at, I could do three, uh, three thirty or later.
I can come to your place if you want me to.
Um, we can do it.
Okay?
Yeah, just, um, you've got my number. If, if you're architect guy, if he's available, let's do it. Otherwise, let's look at another date this week, Thursday or Friday.
Look at everything.
I'm going to put it down after this or anything.
Yes, I want to get it, yeah. Okay, good, any?
You're good to go?
Yes, are you good?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I did have one more question, sorry. So say next meeting, you, the, the site plan gets approved and then we can start engineering. Um, so this isn't a recommending body? So you will approve this site plan, then we don't have to go wait for?
No, there's no village council. This, this body will approve the site plan.
Okay, perfect.
So what more time you need for that's it?
You meet with us and then you'll be submitting your engineer plans, you'll be working with Sermed. Sermed gives us a thumbs up on the engineering that we sign off on. We sign, sign on as being complete that.
Right.
So if we do it that, meeting.
We can, we can approve, what, what, what I would suggest this body do next time we meet is once we have the architectural plans, if we're all in, if we're all in agreement with the materials and everything, we would make the recommendation to approve the site plan, condition upon, conditional upon uh the zone, the ZBA variance and also conditional on a full engineering review that deals with the stormwater retention issue that still has to happen there. And then once, then once you guys sign off on it, then basically once I hear back from Sermed, we administratively approve it then. And then myself and um Jenna, we, we put our signatures on it, put a date on it. And that becomes sufficient. We can refer it back to them. And then he comes there, all his permits and all that is built.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Five and six. Four, six, nine, five, zero.
I, I, I. The, the green. Wherever it was.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll see ya.
Thank you.
Okay.
Nice green.
Sorry, I don't need to catch you off. Um, master plan, proposed schedule, process review.
What I have, I think I handed out to you guys.
Yeah, thanks.
You guys have.
You have my honor.
You should. So everybody got a copy of this colored guide in the spreadsheet?
Yes.
Okay. And then there's an accompanying document, this is proposed work schedule. Um, what I did is I took a look at the year next year uh in terms of putting together a master plan. Um, what I was hoping to ask you guys to do is if you guys don't already have a copy of it or haven't already taken a look at it, to take a look at the old master plan. Um, it is available online from the uh village website. Um, take a look at it. Um, what I'd like to do next month is just have just a general discussion about what elements are in there, things that you guys might like to see done differently, get up questions about what different sections are. Um, uh, and, and just basically open it up at that point. Coming back in February, if, if, what we'd like to do is we would send out letters of intent. One of the things that the state planning enabling legislation says, we have to notify all the local communities, the local utilities. Basically tell everybody that we're in the process of doing the master plan update. Uh, and then provide them with a place and give them a, a website where then they can review all the materials, make any comments that they have to the plan. So this calendar, uh, the schedule that's in front of you just basically works a schedule that basically starts in February and would culminate in November with adoption of a master plan um by the village council. There are a couple of stipulations that are, there's a couple statutory things that you have to do. We have to engage the public during this process. Uh, there has to be a minimum of two public engagement opportunities. Um, what we have traditionally done uh with the county and local communities is we've always provided three opportunities. Um, one of the opportunities we would have in June would be a public workshop that we could hold at this meeting, inviting the public to come in. Because at that point in June, we should have already taken a look at reviewing the goals and objectives of the plan, seeing if there's anything we're going to be changing. Taking a look at our future land use areas or what we called last time, character areas, which is kind of dividing the community up into different areas that we felt were of the same character in nature and use those as planning or for discussion. So for example, twenty six mile road corridor was a character area. Grashit Avenue is a character area. The downtown's a character area. The, the neighborhoods, the different neighborhoods can be there on the character areas. Um. What we would hope to have by June fourth, if we're sitting down with, bringing, requesting the public to come in, um, would be a pretty good idea of what types of changes we'd like to see. But I think we would want to engage the public at that time and say, here are the goals and objectives that are part of the original plan. These are what we're looking to make recommendations and open it up to comments and things like that from them. Um, recognizing most communities don't get a lot of strong input. We would hope that there is in the lead up to that meeting, we at the county would help try to get that out on social media, try to get some buzz going, get an article written in the paper now that we can draft that we think is going to be a master plan change. Try to get citizens to participate. What we will also do is we will reach out to stakeholders. We will reach out to the school district. Um, we'll reach out to the business community and invite those individuals as well um to that meeting. Um, that is one of the ways that we'll engage the public. The second way that we engage the public that we have done almost everything is just put a general survey out there. Um, we never received sta, 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 statistically significant numbers of people responding. But we do find that the people who generally do respond to those online surveys, they take the time to do it and they tend to have comments that are fairly, that tend to be meaningful. Because they usually have these special areas of interest or something and they don't, they won't necessarily come and stand at the podium and voice it, but they will type it into an open section of the survey. Um, the last opportunity that the public then has to participate would take place in November. Um, we're hoping that in September that there will be a draft document that will be approved by this body. Um, we are an advisory body, so we would make a recommendation to uh village council. And village council then through action would release the plan for a sixty three day public review period. That public review period, again, statutory through the enabling act. Um, that would open it up from September tenth, basically to November eleventh, uh, would be that sixty three days. People would have the opportunity to either come in, uh, look at a copy of it, pull it on the web, off the website, make any comments, submit them. Uh, and then we would schedule a public hearing at the planning commission at the end of that period in November uh for final comments on that. And then we would make a recommendation for ad, 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 adaption, excuse me, by the village council, which they could do that at their November twelfth meeting. These number, these dates are all soft dates, but I think that starting in, 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 in March in earnest, where we actually start talking about uh changes and stuff, we could have it all wrapped up by November. Um, if there's, if there's an extra month that's needed or something that we decided needs more focus, there's no, there's no deadline or anything that's driving when this needs to be completed.
This is five years, right?
It's, it's a five year plan. So when you're looking at a five year plan, I mean, you're looking at what you'd like to see in five years, but you're really thinking of more of a twenty year plan. You know, what is, that's, that's really the long range. Um, I did send you guys an email that has a really excellent PowerPoint presentation that was put together by Michigan State. Um, if you've been through the citizen planner program, you've probably seen it. Um, but it answers a lot of questions about what the master plan processes, how we go through it, uh, why we do it. Um, but if you want to take a look at that, it may, it may help generate some more discussion next month. So I guess with that, um, with, along with this calendar, basically the, the spreadsheet basically follows the dates and just calls on key items, key, key elements along the way of what we would be doing.
Um, do we need a, um, a formal recommendation from council to start the process?
We should get one. It'd probably be best, because yes, we, we do, we do serve at their, you guys serve at their, for them. So yeah, we should have something or some directive from Chris or from council.
Can it come directly?
I think, I think, I think it could come him, from him directly. Because it's a meeting, it's a registered motion. It could be locked down to the agenda. If, if they're willing to do that, I don't know if they're comfortable with that, with their agendas or not.
Oh.
Well, there is a recording.
If they're flexible or not.
There is a recording piece on it, so I guess it'll be informational. Because I, I think it's just a good. Go ahead. Yes.
Yeah, because, because there, there is a point in time, and I didn't put it on here, but when we are ready, at, at that public meeting, we can invite them, but we definitely want village council members to have their opportunity to give their input and feedback. We may want to invite them to maybe the March or the April meeting that, that we're having, just to be part of the general discussion if they're interested.
So which one you want? What meeting do you want for next?
Uh, well, if, if, if this, if this calendar were in stone, I would say, I would say the May seventh planning commission meeting would be a good one to open up as an invite to village council members to come to.
Okay, so I will add that tomorrow night under the informational piece.
So with uh.
Trace, can you?
Just to have signs or just to figure out what we're going to do with signs by the time.
What direction?
Oh, you're phrasing, do you think we'll?
I think that by the time we get through this process, we'll have signs wrapped up. I think I'm hoping that by, I'm hoping that by, realistically, that in the summer, we should have signs studied. We bring a contractor, I don't think there's a couple of months to work through it.
Because I'm just trying to figure out how that's going to play into the.
But talking master plan. Signage is, you know, it's, it's, signage is necessarily directly um addressed to the master plan. It's addressing the zone as a tool to get there.
Okay.
So like if we say you might have seen a certain thing in the general business district and we want this character assigned, then we make. Record, we make this recommendation to change the ordinance.
Okay, 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 makes sense.
You're okay? Just a little discussion. Let's start off, what's going on? Okay, so. How much did, um, sorry, let me ask a question quick. How much was the cost to the village for the planning, for the uh?
What do you have to do?
Master plan update?
Uh, no cost.
No cost?
No cost, I mean, planning update.
Okay, so the planning is up, going to update the master plan, right? Correct?
With council, no cost?
You put that on the agenda for a while?
Well, there's an information, you know, there's new business, there's our reports for planning, so include this in that. Because there's no cost, so there's nothing to be voted on.
Yeah.
But.
With council.
We need their participation.
Yeah, it sets the stage, you can start the next month on that.
Tenatively, May seventh, just in case we get behind for any reason.
It's expected. Do you like it?
Perfect. Okay.
May seventh.
Are you good? Trace?
I'm good.
Okay, anybody?
Good?
Yeah.
Anything else on master plan for anybody? Okay, so that'll be a item going forward.
So Jeff, can you just email us tomorrow? This, just so we remember, give you any other check?
Yes, I will do that for the, um, for the building.
Yeah, we'll try not to hammer you with.
No, whatever you guys come up with, I'll just compile it.
I mean, basically, it would just be a summary of what we. Hope for.
I have a feeling once we sit down with this architect, we can tell him what we're looking for, he will make suggestions as well because he knows.
Yeah.
I think.
I don't think we're, I don't think we're requesting anything that wasn't in reason.
No.
No, by no, by no means. I mean, that, that is a gateway property. I mean, that is the entrance to the community and I'd hate to see a blank cream wall facing Grashit.
It did look like a little bit like a prison colony, yeah, but had a little. I mean, even if the landscaping isn't changing, it's just moving inward.
Well, you might have changed some of it, some of those things.
There's changes, he has the trees and stuff.
Yeah.
But, but what I, he has the required, he has the required right amount of trees and shrubs, but we, he, he really owes more. Because there should be, I believe it's up to five percent of the site just general should be landscaped, but there's no green space on it. And again, it should be, then there's supposed to be ten square feet or for every so many parking spaces of trees or some type of.
I mean, just adding, adding landscaping to that corner is going to change everything because it's been an asphalt parking lot for.
That, that'll be an improvement just unto itself if it's done this way.
But what, what gets put there will give a pace of what gets put on the rest of that. And if it isn't of a, a great caliber, everybody else that comes along is going to go, well, look what we can get away with here. And let's throw it up.
I think, I think it'll be, I, I think it'll look pretty good when it's done. I mean, it's going to look better than what.
He brought.
And what he's working on of that twenty seven.
And the thing is, if you look at the additional lots that are going up Grashit as you're moving up towards Wise Bys, they're smaller and even more restrictive. So this is probably the, the smallest development. You see, those other ones are pretty much non-developable unless they become merged.
Well, that's what we got booked for.
Yeah.
I mean, we really need this place to be a palace to sell the rest of the triangle.
Which I'm kind of, which I guess it kind of does set it up in a sense because he said he's willing to give up that property behind and have that, and he would give up that, sell it, but the license to, serve, what did he say?
Yes, I didn't catch that.
He's got the high lease license.
He has the liquor license.
So there's your, there's your potential bar or your potential restaurant, and he said it's larger than what he's proposing the building. I don't know how much larger, but.
He controls another property, same the, the house next door.
He said it was, well, yeah, he said it was bigger than.
It is wider.
Proposed, I don't know how much bigger, but um, there's, that'd be your potential gateway.
Yeah, and I believe there's another residential property, as you go again.
There's two.
There's two there.
I think he owns both.
And I do believe he owns both of them. And I, I've looked, but there's, there's different names, but I think he does have, he has both.
Because at that point, if ever came to that, he would probably, would really would like to request a sidewalk. Because then you're getting really close to, this car is getting closer to twenty sixteen, Grashit is slowing down. Further back, it'll be, you know, forty, fifty miles an hour, right on the side of the road, no sidewalk, but.
He used to own his lots over here. It'd be west of the store, current location now. I need four of those houses there or three?
No.
Thank you everyone for participating though and giving him some direction. I just didn't want to send him away and said, we did, we don't like this, go get something else.
No, he's just going to.
We have to be willing to.
Delay everything.
Right. Thank you for taking the time to do that.
Okay, bring it back. Election of officers. Um, so annually, we, we're a little late last year because it was a replacement. Uh, so election of officers should be done annually every January going forward. So what is your officer?
Well, we need a new recording secretary, obviously.
Um, that was not, it, it's basically chair and co-chair. Um, as far as recording secretary, that was an offerance to her.
Or is a clerk going to come to our meetings?
We will see where we are at and we'll see where you are at because we won't know until tomorrow whether you are returning to us or not. There is a potential that Tracy could return to us.
Because a secretary, what recording secretary is sep, is separate.
I will share that Brian has submitted his resignation um from the, as the council liaison. Now, great as to whether that, that's up to Chris and council as to the acceptance of that resignation.
I think it's pretty much up to Brian.
So it's, I mean, so, I mean, so I don't want to speak for what's going to happen tomorrow because nobody knows. I mean, we could table this if you want and revisit it next month with.
I mean, we still need to fill two seats regardless of.
We have a new, and we have a seat that's going to get filled.
Right. Potentially.
Right. We know that.
The liaison has to be somebody that's on the council?
Correct.
So do you want to do this this evening? Um, do you want to wait? Whether of anybody who wants to.
So you're just looking to fill chair and co-chair?
Chair and co-chair tonight.
Right. Why don't, why don't we do that?
Okay.
So. Did anyone else want to? I'll just make a motion, um, for Jenna to be chair and your co-chair, correct? I'll just make a motion for Javi to be chair and your co-chair, correct? So we'll keep that safe. Do we need to save secretary?
Uh, we should state, I was looking at that. Because I think officially you are sec.
We're officially secretary, but we would need to fill those shoes.
Well, I think we should have the clerk come to our meetings, like, as always been done in the past. I don't know when it became this foothold, who gives a crap about planning?
Well, let's do a second on that, if anybody is.
Second to?
Tracy's motion.
Tracy's motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, and then as far as our clerk, it was with Deborah Mack and based, and it turned out to be Vonda for a while.
That's not a requirement for the clerk to take the notice.
It's her, I was, it's her responsibility, but she can.
Delegate.
Delegate, correct. So, she, Deborah Mack started the delegation, it went to Vonda, and then when Vonda resigned, it came to Tracy. And that's how we got where we're at with that.
So let's vote on that.
Okay, do you want to figure out if we need a secretary?
Well, because I don't know, you two decide. Either one of you if want to be a secretary.
I don't.
I'll say.
Okay, well, let's just do these two.
You sure you don't want to get more seats?
Well, I can do it.
I will continue to record, because this is, the secretary and the recording secretary are two different positions. Because more than likely, I will stay on the committee and I will be the liaison. I'm thinking is how it's more than likely going to go. So I can't hold that title of secretary. I can still be the recording secretary though.
Yeah, because we have to have, right, a member of planning as liaison.
Correct.
To council.
So the secretary at this point is, is a title. Sometimes there's papers that need to be signed by the secretary of the committee, but.
There is nothing here that I see that requires a secretary.
Okay, perfect.
So.
In my history, we, I never had, we never had a secretary. We had a clerk that appointed an official.
Right, and, and as secretary, we have. Secretary was not a recording, with what Tracy said. Secretary was not a recording secretary. It was more so just communication person. Okay, so, a motion's on the table for that. All in favor, any questions?
Nope.
Questions?
Aye.
Aye. You good there?
Mm-hmm. Motion here, okay.
Okay, and, um, set a public hearing. This just came to us today, so no one has any information on it yet, right?
Um, the only information, I did talk to the petitioner by way of the phone. This is Lombardo. Lombardo owns the property at Clausen Street and Grashit Avenue. They're looking to do a rezon, they want to take the frontage that's on Clausen Street and subdivide that into three developable lots and build three single-family homes there and retain the residential office designation that would be to the south and technically south and west of that.
Doesn't that put those three homes right out on Grashit? The first one would stay within, within the sub's current homes, but the other two are going to put it outside of where the.
No, not necessarily, because, because looking at the building footprint, that, that lot is over, he's looking at an 80-foot wide lot there, so there would be, there would be enough setback in that for that.
And currently, this is what?
This, currently, this is all one single parcel.
Oh.
Uh, that is all one, it's all one single parcel, undeveloped.
Anyone put houses on it?
Along Clausen Street.
They just cleared that land too.
Recently.
Yeah, they tore down all the trees before they requested something.
I haven't looked at it.
I'm trying to think of what is across from the entrance to Decorah Park, I don't.
Yeah, the credit union, or, no, actually that's further down.
In between the Decorah Park and the medical building there.
Right.
And to the Chanel South there. Okay, so I guess we can discuss it. We'll set the public hearing.
Yeah.
And I mean, we're good.
The petitioner will be in next month, will have more information.
They'll drive by and be tapped in.
Take a look at it, yeah.
It's always dark outside.
Again, we would be making, on this one, we would be making a recommendation to village council that they would have to take action at in February.
And what's the notification minimum?
I'm sorry?
The clerk is going to have to notify people around us of the public hearing.
Yeah, actually Laurie will, it'll be a 300-foot, it'll be a 300-foot notification. That's, that's the statutory, so it'll be from this, be from the boundaries of this parcel. In fact, I'll be doing it, we'll draw it out of the GIS and everyone, I'll give a list of all the tax ID numbers that fall within it.
That's the minimum though. Can we, we could, can we increase that to include that subdivision that they know what's going to happen in there? People that live within that Chanel Sub is notified?
No, because we can't do that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, the statute, the statutory requirement from the state says it's 300 feet, so I'm not sure that we can.
But I think that's the minimum.
Yeah, we may, allow me to look into that. Honestly, I don't have an answer for that.
But I mean, some communities, they put up a sign so that everyone lives around it. They can, they know that something's occurring at that piece of property.
Sure, and Chesterfield does that.
If we're going to extend it though, then we need to change our ordinance or some, our housekeeping and we're going to extend it for anything moving forward.
No, I don't have a problem with that either. I think more people should be notified versus less.
But with the notification of public hearing, it will also be public, not only sending them a letter, there will be, there'll be a notification that goes in the paper.
I'm sure there'll be a notification on Facebook.
Put it in the paper, don't worry, you got a paper now. Do you know what that, who's looking? Who gets the paper now?
I think I know.
For everybody on Facebook, so.
I know, I know, it's, he's looking to, he's looking to meet requirements of single-family too, so there'll be, there will be single-family homes, not dual.
What's single-family two versus single-family one?
Uh, density, it becomes lots, I, I'd have to look it up, but in the schedule of regulations, there's a difference in the, in the density that you can build to. I think single-family one lots are wider and deeper than single-family two. I think single-family two is more dense.
Because he got it 60-foot wide.
Yeah, he's got two 60s and he's showing an 80 here.
Yeah, I mean, that's pretty comparable to the lots on the subs.
Yeah.
Okay, um, do you have the lot number on that?
Yeah, I would need the appropriate information.
Let me, I have not received everything from Laurie. I'll be, I'll be writing up the public hearing notice and all that stuff. I'm going to be doing that, so I'll send you guys copies of all that, so you'll have the full information.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to set a public hearing to rezone three properties, southwest corner of Grashit and Clausen, from residential office to single-family two. Developer is Lombardo, and let me give a date on that. February 5th.
Our next meeting.
At 7:00 PM.
I'll second.
Okay, that was Jen and Steve.
All in favor?
Aye.
And he will be here?
I've, I've requested.
Well, yeah, it would be nice to hear what he wants to.
Correct, build.
Yeah.
Okay.
Actually, what he wants to build there, we had no, because this is a platid subdivision. We don't have any.
Just, I mean, stay here.
Build whatever he wants.
Yep. And it's probably not going to look like the ones in the Chanel subdivision. Probably look something comparable to what he's building.
You can build the same thing he built in Decorah Park.
It's fine.
Okay, any public comments on agenda items? Do you have anything to say? Um, call from the table, anybody?
Um, I guess I'd like to ask our temporary liaison. You were at the last council meeting. Was anything brought up in regards to, from the attorney on Lombardo?
Um, the, those add pieces of property you're talking about, the ones all owned by some Egyptian company?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're going to give them, I think, is what the plan is. And so they're going to, I mean, it's not a zone, what would it be? If he gives them to the.
It's going to deed them.
Deed them, there you go, that's appropriate.
To the association.
That sounds like that's what the plan is right now.
And has there been any discussion with Lombardo to complete the rest of the trails that were?
No, that was not discussed at all.
I will share that on that note, they are working under the pre-existing PUD and Pemro.
What's that name?
There was some question as to whether they were working under the PUD over there.
Yeah.
And they are.
No.
So.
Yeah, the paperwork I have on the Pemro, they aren't following setbacks for the house. They popped the house up to one hundred.
The village has made a formal request from the county to get all of the PUDs for the village.
And Jeff is saying those, but those PUDs that are, that are at the county level.
Yes.
Are in reference to sewers and roads and they're not to the aesthetics and the building. Those aren't submitted to the county. So what the county has is really a redo.
What I have, what I have seen at the county in terms of, at least in terms of Decorah Park, is four master, there's four, there is a original master deed and a site plan, and there's four amendments to that master deed that have come through. Each one of those have been different phases of that subdivision. And then there is one document that is like the covenant document that's all taxed. So, but none of those were there any elevations or building materials, nor did I see a registered letter of agreement. One of the things that you'll know when you take a look at what we've asked to put into the PUD ordinances, when that agreement is drafted between the developer and the community and it's signed off on, that has to be, that agreement, that is registered with the clerk at the county. So there will be a recording on that document in the future. That doesn't exist in there, I don't think any of the PUDs exist in the village. Because I, I went through it and started looking for those documents as well, and I think I came up with probably the same that you guys are going to get returned to you from the clerk's office.
Yeah, it's, the requirements the county requires for them to submit has to do with the roads and the sewers and the.
Right.
Utility lines, easements, and it doesn't have anything to do with the amenities and the elevations and the houses that were submitted to be built.
No, that's all, that's all.
That's all supposed to be here.
Right.
And the other thing I mentioned is that each one of these reviews that they had gone to, they should have came to the village, but I can tell you for sure, each one of those replays never came back to planning or the village for approval.
The only, the only one that I know that had come through for review was Decorah Park four, the top portion.
It's the corner.
Yeah, there were absolutely no changes in there, because I, I did look at that review resulting in complaints and it was fine. But that's the only one that I've seen at the time that I've been on.
And at that time, you weren't aware of the trails that were supposed to be.
No, I had no idea, but I mean, those, those elements were, yeah.
Well, I'll say this, I have a hard time wanting to give Mr. Lombardo anything when he doesn't give anything back. And I was looking for lots, and this is right. He knows what he did. And just because we're this organized mess, doesn't mean we shouldn't try and play it. I feel the corruption that played with the village for all these years, I want to be done with living with it. I don't care if it's a big, fix it.
Okay, anybody else? Good, okay, motion to adjourn. 8:48, all in favor?
Aye.